Thank you, C. Good to see you. So I would call our January 14th work session to order. We are going to change up the order slightly today to accommodate schedules, and we're going to go with the fiscal items first. So I'd like to call up Colonel Joe Conger. Hey, Colonel, how are you?
Very good.
You don't have to sit all day? But that's not usually you.
No, I've been wanting to go. I can still look more along at that.
I have already texted Major Wydic. Change in policy.
To tell him that Conger gets first up.
Right.
Let him know we change it back when he comes, or?
Thank you, sir. Whenever you're ready.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much, and members of the council. The administration and the department are seeking a request for approval of an agreement with St. John's Properties to lease approximately 4,016 square feet at 1504 Joe Avenue, Suites 110 through 120 in Hailthorpe. For temporary operations, the Wilkins Precinct Detective Unit during the construction of the new precinct building. Rent for the lease term totals $140,436. We've worked closely with our partners in property management, who estimate that the additional common area maintenance, utilities, and HVAC costs for the county is responsible will total approximately $56,933 during the lease term. Lease includes an early occupancy agreement, which enables the county to occupy the premises beginning March 1st in 2025. The county is not responsible for rent during that two-month period, but is responsible for the rent for the aforementioned other expenses, the CAM, utilities, HVAC. Also of note, the county is also responsible for information technology improvement costs, and the total estimate for those is $72,170.
Okay, great. Are there any questions from the members? None? Thank you.
Thank Colonel.
Thank you all very much. All right, have a good day. All right, next up is Director Smith, Bob Smith, from Wreckin' Parks. Director Smith, how are you, sir?
Happy New Year to the council.
Happy New Year.
Good evening. Administration and the department is requesting approval of an amendment to a contract with United Rentals North America to continue to provide portable toilet rental and servicing for various county agencies. The proposed amendment, which commences upon council approval, increases the maximum compensation by $560,811 from $613,290 to $1,107,411 for the entire five-year and four-month term. This contract began March 1st, 2021, and will run through July 2026. Under the proposed amendment, the contractor will continue to provide all labor, equipment, supplies, and related items necessary for portable toilet rental and servicing for both regular and ADA units located across county facilities. The department is advising that the proposed amendment is necessary because the compensation for the original contract was calculated based on the department's sole use, and specifically the department advised that the contract has since been used by additional county agencies such as property management, HHS, public works, transportation, police, aging, and PAI, resulting in greater than anticipated expenditures, as well as some increases to the costs in the contract. According to the fiscal system, as of January 3rd, $599,000 has been totaled on this contract, so we are still under the anticipated maximum, and we are seeking the increase to the maximum amount of the contract.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions? Councilman Grandle.
Mr. Smith, would you care to answer? Are you aware of the auditor's questions?
Yes.
Would you care to address those?
The question related to the 13% increase in 2023, is that the first question, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, that was related to a one-time increase after COVID, and as the sole bidder for this contract, there were exceptions made for unprecedented cost increase by the purchasing division related to this contract.
Okay, and I just want to voice some concern after talking with our auditor, not necessarily with your agency in particular, but apparently we're seeing multiple, as the auditor's statement says, multiple contracts have received similar price escalations in excess of council-approved contracted rates. And I don't think that anyone's saying anyone did anything wrong or illegal, just seems that in a lot of these instances, the council is made aware of these escalations well after they've already taken place.
That's right, sir.
And there seems to be, this seems to be happening multiple times, so unless my colleagues want to go with the other two bullet points, I'm happy with Mr. Smith's answer as is.
I had a question for Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Grandle. Director, is this something that when we have something like this happen mid-contract, is it something that we should be trying to bid back out to see if we can get a? It was a 23% increase that I think we were able to negotiate down to 18%, but it was still 18% when I think in the contract it addressed 5% increases per year, or something along those lines.
Sure, yeah, Mr. Chair, this was kind of a unique situation in that we were coming off the heels of COVID and that they were the only game in town with this situation, but we do have opportunities to look at that. Usually it's up to a certain amount or CPI, and that it depends on where CPI is in that given month, but I think this was a unique circumstances in this instance because of the volume that was going on in the parks and with property management and all the outdoor activities on the heels of that.
Any other questions? None, okay. Thank you, Director Smith.
Certainly, thank you.
All right, next up, we have Deputy Director Richardson. Mr. Richardson, how are you today?
Good afternoon, Chairman Urteau and members of the council. The administration and Department of Health and Human Services is seeking your approval for a contract with ProCare Ambulance of Maryland to provide our Baltimore County residents who receive Medicaid transportation services to and from non-emergency medical-related appointments. The contractor will provide non-emergency wheelchair van and ambulance transportation services to and from medically necessary coverage services for eligible Baltimore County Medicaid recipients. The contract will commence upon council approval and continue through September 5th of 2026 with one one-year renewal. The total estimated compensation will not exceed $4,964,400 for the entire term of the contract. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the members? Deputy Director Richardson, it looks like this is all coming from state and federal money. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it's just passed through to us?
Correct.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, and then we have Director Tablada, HT.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not going to use all the nicknames of my predecessor that he gave you.
Hi, Tess.
Hi, Tess.
Thank you. Oh, that was better. Want me to start again? No. So anyway, we're requesting approval of two amendments, amendment to two contracts, one of which is Test America Laboratories, Martell Laboratories, and these are the two labs that we use right now to do PCB sampling, other water quality sampling in Baltimore County waterways. Those are requirements that we do to comply with our MS4 permits and TMDL. Basically, we're going to attempt to request increasing the money from $150,000 to $1.2 million for the remaining of the contract. And the reason primarily is that we're doing a lot more, we're going to be doing a lot more sampling for PCB. As you know, recently, we received a settlement from the company that manufactures PCB, and so we had the funding from that special settlement to do more testing. PCB is a very toxic constituent that accumulates in fish and in our waterways, and we have several TMDLs for PCBs in Baltimore County, so we need to do testing, which requires a very sophisticated level of testing, where you break down the conjurance of PCB. PCB is just one term, but it has different components, like different legs, so that requires a special lab that does this kind of testing. So the contract basically, this is, the amendment is basically to increase the money available to spend. We have about, you're going to have two years of contract left, and then we'll rebid it, and then we go back to continue sampling. So with that, I request your approval for that two amendments.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the members? Yes, Councilman Young.
Thanks, Chairman. Good to see you, sir. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding it right. The original bid was for $720 per unit being tested, the original bid.
I don't recall exactly the amount, but it was, the total of the contract was $150,075 each company.
Right.
And they had a specific unit for the samples.
And that was prior to us receiving outside funding that we're going to put towards this testing?
Outside that, that was the money, that was the bid the company bid for the samples, for the analysis and analytical data.
Your testimony said that we've received and we're receiving money in order to do testing.
Yeah, the money that we got, a settlement from Monsanto, which was some official audit, we received additional monies, the county, Baltimore County, for PCBs, and so some of that money, it requires us not to do more testing.
Right, and the original bid that we did back in July 26, 2023, was before the settlement?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
So the money were lower.
Right, and, right, it was lower, and because now that we have the grant money, right?
Correct.
We're going to expand the testing. The original grant was to do some testing related to it, but it was $720, but now that we've received this funding, we're going to expand it, which obviously means we go from $100,000 to $1 million, right?
Correct.
Got it. So the majority of that $1 million is coming from the settlement?
The majority comes from that settlement because it's designated to PCBs.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm just making sure that, obviously, that makes a lot of sense, that's why I wanted to give you a chance to give us the narrative on why we're going from $100,000 to $1 million, which that is a lot more information.
It is a big amendment, sorry, Speaker, so.
Sure, understood, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Young. Any other questions from the members? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Good evening, Councilman Chair and members of the county council. The administration is requesting an approval of a contract with A. Morton Thomas &amp; Associates, Brutus &amp; Associates, Inc., Greenman Peterson, Inc., Trans Systems Corporation, Wilson T. Ballard Company, and Whitman Requirk &amp; Associates, LLP, for civil engineering and site design services. This is a contract that is for professional services that actually went through the PSSC, the Professional Services Selection Committee, and it was chosen in order based on qualifications for professional services for new construction, alterations, renovation projects to include project evaluation, planning, accessibility, and engineering services such as civil, structural, landscape, architectural, and will be given equally or based on experience. Each contractor has a not-to-exceed of $1 million, and there's an MBE of 30%. I can take any questions if you'd like.
Any questions from the members? Councilman Pitoka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is really not a question related to this particular project, but while I see you, Ms. Schindel, both Mr. Reed and Mr. Benjamin, I've been trying to get a handle on our services, our on-call services for title work, and so, Ms. Schindel, you were kind enough to direct me to Mr. Benjamin, who has directed me to Mr. Reed, but I still don't have a handle on how we... Can you hear me? My mic is on. I still don't have a handle, this is separate from this particular project, but I really wanted to get a handle on how we have on-call services for title work. So if the county is going to purchase a piece of property, who does our title work? And what is the process for someone to get on the list, to get pre-qualified for title work? I've been trying to get to answer to this for, I don't know, six months or so, and so I thought I would bring it up at this meeting since all three of you are here.
Well, DeAndre Walker, AO, so, sorry that you've been trying to get it for six months, that is real estate compliance, and we'll get you an answer to that in terms of, we have some people on staff, and then we have some on-call services as well, but we'll get your answer to that next week.
Yeah, so the question I've been asked by some constituents is, how do they get on the list to be an on-call contractor to do title work?
Yep, so if they're going to be on-call, there is a list where you have to be pre-qualified, but there's a whole process associated with that.
That's what they're trying to find out, is what that process is, and then how to engage in that process.
Yep, I'll get it for you.
Sorry, Ms. Schindel, I know that's not the topic of this, but...
No, no problem, glad we could help, and thank you. I don't do title work, so thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thanks, Ms. Schindel. All right, and then we have Director Chris Martin out at Iron Mountain. I'm going to, that's what I'm going to do, I'm going to jump around. It's ahead of you. Mr. Martin, how are you?
Good, how are you, Council Chair, council members? Thank you. So, the Office of Information Technology is seeking to use an Omnia Partners Cooperative Agreement with Iron Mountain Information Management, Inc. The new agreement will align costs to industry standard pricing. The estimated cost increase is 77% for the same services under the new contract. Baltimore County requires continued services for records management services for documents. The new agreement also provides the ability for additional services such as scanning services to assist with lifecycle management. The Office of Information Technology is planning to use records management and digitization services at this time. The current budget is $154,220. The agreement will be in effect until January 22, 2022. And then I also had some auditor questions, if you want me to address those now as well.
Okay, great, if you want to.
Yeah, so the first question was, what was the value of the services provided but not yet billed under the amended interim contract? The last invoice was paid, the last invoice paid was for services provided through December 24, 2024. That was included in the amount expended to date that was previously provided. The value of the services provided but not yet billed under the amended interim contract is $5,296 for 12/24/2024 to January 14, 2025. What is the status of procuring a new long-term contract for these services? Iron Mountain's current agreement is through January 22, 2026. This is through Omnia, who anticipates working on the new solicitation in quarter one, early quarter one to quarter two to replace the agreement. The county will be utilizing our participating agreement to use the new contract once solicited and awarded. And then, according to the county's purchasing manual, Section 12.1.5, a contract amendment does not require county council approval if the amendment does not materially revise the contract terms, including but not limited to the contract term, scope of work, or nature of services to be rendered. Please explain why the extension and associated unit price increases were not considered material revisions. And charter requires county council approval of services for a term in excess of two years or involving the expenditure of more than $25,000 per year. Council approved the procurement on October 21, 2024, for the period of July 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024, to include the unit prices for a not-to-exceed of $101,000. The extension was to approve for only, the approval was only to be one month through January 31, 2025, and the extension would only need to be signed by the CAO.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Councilman Grandle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Martin, completely off-topic of your issue today, and I'm glad that Ms. Buckler is here. Oh, there she is. So, and I'm not sure if my staff has contacted either of your offices yet on this, but there used to be on the county website where you could punch in your address and your trash and recycling schedule for the year would come up, and you could print it out. And it's my understanding that a mailer was sent out with a QR code, right? And I think we've gotten some criticism on that QR code, so people don't know how to use them. Is it possible to provide the old functionality of citizens and property owners to plug in their address and download their trash schedule like they have been able to do in previous years? Is that still available, or has the platform changed and the software no longer works, or what's happening?
We're working on it.
So I will admit I'm not fully informed of the situation specific, but Director Buckler is saying it is in process to remediate, so I'll consult with her, and we'll get an answer for you.
Okay, it would be great if we could resurrect that service. I've received a lot of requests for that from my constituents, so thank you very much for addressing it in advance. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Lawrence.
Councilman Grandle, Councilman Pitoka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, thank you, Councilman Grandle, for bringing that up. I can tell you, in the second district, we have had an enormous amount of pushback against the QR codes. My constituents, they do not like QR codes. They hate QR codes. And so we're, my staff has to defend the QR codes, even though we weren't really part of the process for QR codes. But it may be comfortable for us to use QR codes, and not so much for the everyday user that's trying to figure out their trash schedule. So, I mean, I think it's a great try to kind of advance in technology, but it's just not working out so well in practicum.
And we appreciate that feedback. Knowing that helps us not only in the trash area, but if we're utilizing QR codes, we can, in other areas, we can streamline those processes, so thank you.
Sorry, Councilman Marks.
I want to echo what my colleagues have said, particularly senior citizens just aren't used to that.
Okay.
Maybe in a few years, but many are not, so thank you.
Appreciate it, yep.
Since it's been brought up by everyone else, and I know this isn't the issue, and while not on the executive side, just throwing out a suggestion where I'm sure this was also an attempt to save money because of the printing necessary to go to all of these jurisdictions. Perhaps if you're formulating a plan to fix this, to allow for folks to request that hard copy versus just follow the QR code and go to the website, because even going to the website has not been helpful, even for me and my staff, we had to figure it out at first, which also doesn't create a calendar. So in terms of cost savings, which I can understand too with that printing cost, you save it if you ask folks to take an action to get it sent to them from the county while also being able to print it out themselves, so then you have, you catch it from all angles. The folks that are savvy can use the savvy aspect, the folks that don't want to be savvy at all can get a hard copy, and the folks that just know how to look at the website can print it out. So I just wanted to put that out there as you're formulating a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Young. Yeah, I think we, I think we've all gotten lit up for the last two, three weeks about this, so it's been, hopefully, next time we do QR codes, we have a little pre-talk about it. So, thank you, Director Martin, I think we're done.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And we're, I'm going to mix things up slightly. Colonel McGann in the back, he was in the back, there he is. You have a miscellaneous business piece about a grant, it looks like. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Good afternoon, Council Chair, and to the rest of the councilmen. Baltimore County Police Department received a donation from Nationwide Mutual Insurance of a 2022 Accurate TLX with a value of $28,600. Vehicle is in good condition. Nationwide makes vehicles available as a donation to law enforcement to combat auto theft in the Baltimore region. This vehicle is being donated to our Regional Auto Theft Task Force for the purpose of combating auto theft, and must not be equipped with emergency equipment as a condition of this donation. More specifically, this vehicle will be used in street and investigative operations involving vehicle theft. The vehicle will not be used for general law enforcement purposes, and will not become a general-purpose patrol vehicle. All costs to maintain and repair this vehicle will be paid by the Maryland Vehicle Theft Prevention Grant. There will be no cost to Baltimore County for these vehicles. The vehicle's been checked to ensure Nationwide has the title. The title will be passed to us and will become property of Baltimore County in accordance with the donation agreement for two years, with the possibility of an extension by mutual agreement, at which time Nationwide has agreed to donate a replacement vehicle. The donation's been offered by Nationwide without any special conditions or expectations in exchange for this donation, and there are no matching funds required for this donation.
Great, thank you, sir. Any questions? Members, anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Quick and easy. Mr. Secretary, do you want to go to, should we go to resolutions next? Is that, is that where you want it to go?
Yes, sir.
Or did you have something else before I?
No, Resolution 5, I'm sorry, Resolution 225.
Oh, okay. 225 is the Department of Planning? Want to go there? Okay.
Yes, sir.
It looks like we have, oh, we have Deputy Director. I saw Director Lafferty back there, too, I thought he was coming for you.
Good afternoon, Council Chair and members of the council. I'm here on the resolution. I'm here on the resolution for the small area plans. The Department of Planning is beginning the small area plan process as outlined in Master Plan 2030, which stated that we were to develop and implement a systematic approach to creating small area plans countywide as a follow-up to Master Plan 2030. In addition, 12 areas were identified on a map in the master plan for these small area plans. In order to ensure transparency in the process, a resolution is needed in order to clearly state the intent of this effort and how plans will be developed with communities in Baltimore County in the coming years. Master Plan 2030 directed the Department of Planning to begin with Small Area Plan 11, which includes Middle River, Essex, White Marsh, Rossville, and Bullies Quarters. Additionally, this year, the county council also proposed, the county council also approved a contract to provide staff support for developing the first plan with the firm of Air Saint Gross. We are currently in the preliminary planning phase for Small Area Plan 11. The remaining small area plans will begin after the completion of Plan 11, one at a time, as staff capacity allows. The planning board will review each of the plans upon completion and recommend adoption to the county council as amendments to Master Plan 2030. Do you have any questions?
I just want to thank you for the small area plan in Middle River and White Marsh being the first one, and the work you're already undertaking to engage those community stakeholders. So, thank you very much.
Sure.
Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Ms. Mante.
Good afternoon.
Good to see you. As I recall, I don't have the master plan in front of me, but I recall, well, let me just ask you this, how is staffing for small, your staff for small area plans? Do you have the same amount of staff or new staffing, or?
We currently have the same amount of staff. We are working with them in conjunction with Air Saint Gross as part of that contract to provide some training. We have a lot of newer planners who don't have a lot of on-the-ground community planning experience. So, we've been working with Air Saint Gross since August to kind of help us get them up to speed, the planners up to speed, and we are hopeful that maybe around March, we'll be in the public engagement phase for small area plan 11.
Excellent. As I recall, in the master plan, one of the modifications that the council made in its review of the master plan, and this is kind of a budgetary item, is that we add additional staff for small area plans. So I want to bring that up, that we're in budget cycle. This is something that's identified in the 10-year master plan. So, Mr. Reed, County Administrative Officer Walker, just keep in mind, this is a directive, or I guess it's a directive in a master plan, to provide additional resources to the planning department for small area plans.
Yes, sir. That would be a part of Director LaFerty's review for F Y 26, and when he comes before us, that should be a part of his request when he comes before us, and we take all that into consideration when we're building the balance budget.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mante. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Patoka. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Mante.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. And then we're going to go, I'm moving around here a little bit. Just going to call Director Buckler about Bill 10724.
Here for Bill 107-24, county residents and organizations have been asking how they can get permitted to hang banners from street lamps that are owned by Baltimore County. You see them some places in the county, and other places you don't see them. The county actually had a prohibition to this in 23-1-102 of county code. It prohibits signage on street lamp posts. So this legislation modifies this and adds 23-2-103, which gives the county ability, the ability to issue permits for the hanging of signs on county-owned street lamps. The permitting process includes specific regulations to ensure the banners are appropriately, are appropriate and installed by professionals. So we've put in place a process where those permits would come, those requests would come through D P W T, D P W would take a look at them, make sure they're appropriate, and then pass it through to permits, to issue a permit to hang the banners. Happy to take any questions you have about this.
Do we anticipate that these will mostly be chamber groups, event? This isn't going to necessarily, this isn't going to be advertising, per se?
No. We have them, they're only permitted in commercial revitalization districts, and we have specifications about what they can be. We anticipate them to be things, you know, stating what area that is, or it might be seasonal, but it's not advertising.
Councilman Patoka?
No, no. I was pointing at Councilman Young. Oh, Councilman Young? Ms. Buckler was still diving into this piece of legislation, but, so any, any piece of county property, right? So a light post, a, you know, a parking meter?
This is specific to county-owned light posts, and they have to be eight feet above the ground.
Perfect.
So, and that, that's spelled out in the, in the process.
Got it. No worries. There was some conversation before we got here about what it was, but that's clear. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yes. Councilman Jones?
Yes, I guess I had a quick question. So, is it the position of the county that you need legislation to be able to give people permission to put things on those light posts?
That is correct, because currently county code says you cannot do it, and we know that people have done it. They didn't come through and get permission to do it. It's, it's just happened. So we're creating a process to be able to give permission to do it and not make it banned by county code.
Right. So, this would include, like, my Rice's Town community put wreaths up on the poles, the light poles?
It's specific to banners? I'm not sure how the wreaths have happened. Oh, yeah. It might be a banner that has a picture of a wreath and says "Happy Holidays," yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Buckler, sorry, Council, Mr. Chair, I think they may be state-owned poles in Rice's Town. Is that right, Ms. Buckler?
It's a state road, but I'm not sure if the light poles is the states.
There are different agreements in different areas. We'd have to look at that specific one and get back to you who owns those poles, and that may be some of the reason that you see them in certain places and not in others right now. This legislation is specific to county-owned poles. So if the state owns it, this wouldn't apply. If somebody else owns it, private entity, this wouldn't apply.
Thank you.
Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To your knowledge, Ms. Buckler, is there a G I S layer that would identify if it was county-owned pole or state-owned pole?
Do we know, Deputy Russell, is there a G I S layer? If it's a county-owned light pole?
G I S, now, we do know which poles are, like you said, Russian County Road, Russian County Road. It's a state road, and that streetscape is actually maintained by the county.
I see.
So they are all these curves.
Gotcha.
And then once we get it out in case, we'll be able to determine.
Ah ha. So state highway does not, B G E does not. So really, the only place we have authority would be the county-owned poles. And Councilman Jones, to your point, I think Rice's Town has historically put up different banners and things, and so either they were county-owned poles, which we didn't, maybe we shouldn't bring up Rice's Town.
There are a lot of locations, if you drive throughout the county, there are others that I can think of that have this. How it got there, but then there's other organizations that have approached the county and asked to do it, and then we have to say, well, by code, it says you can't. So, we're trying to find a way to make this functional.
Any other questions? Could these signs potentially have QR codes on them?
They could.
I just, I had to ask, yeah.
They could, and believe me, we understand the QR code issue. We were trying something different, clearly different, has created a lot of heartburn, and we are working on a way to make so people could do a printable calendar. Their schedules didn't change, so if they have last year's calendar, it's this, like, you know, I know that the day of the week and the numbers changed, but whatever day, if they had a Monday pickup, it's still a Monday pickup. It didn't change. So they could still look at last year's for now, and we're trying to find a way that they can print a calendar to have it to look at.
Change is hard.
It's very hard.
Thank you, Director Buckler.
Thank you.
Any, no other questions, correct? Okay.
All right. I think we're going to cover resolutions next, or at least some of our resolutions. Resolution four, that's council members Marks and Crandall encouraging the Maryland General Assembly on the rejection of beer and wine sales in groceries.
I believe Mr. Young was also asked to be a co-sponsor, if I remember correctly. I don't want to, I want to make sure.
I correct?
I think you mentioned it when it was introduced, but, and we forgot.
You did. Yeah, you did. I did say that.
Okay. I'm sorry about that.
Not so confident, Councilman.
No, the issue's changed down, forget it. Yes, I'm on board. Put me on it.
There have been some developments since then, but.
Right, right, right. So.
Councilman Marks?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I thank my colleagues for their co-sponsorship. Resolution 425 requests that the Maryland General Assembly block legislative actions that would allow for beer and wine sales at grocery stores. I know I did see one report that the governor was no longer pursuing this, but my understanding is the legislation is still active, so this would put us on record. Those who support this change say that allowing such sales would create more choice, quite the contrary, what it would probably do is it would force small retailers, many of which are family-owned retailers, out of business like we've seen in Colorado, which adopted a similar change, I believe in 2022. So, this resolution states that the intent of the Baltimore County Council is to urge that this not be passed in Annapolis, and that we continue to support our small and family-owned liquor stores and other businesses.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Councilman Crandall, did you have? Oh, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Patoka. Councilman Marks, thank you for your leadership on this resolution. At first, when I was reading it, I was hesitant to get on board initially, simply because I think in general, in capitalism, competition is good. However, when you look at the landscape of beer and wine sales in Baltimore County, especially in the seventh district, there are plenty of choices to go buy beer, wine, and spirits. And if you consider where, especially in the seventh district, but throughout Baltimore County, where these stores are located, many of them are located in strip centers that have lost a major anchor, like a grocery store, and that liquor store may ultimately be the anchor for that strip center that's keeping that strip center going. And we all know how difficult retail is these days, and to attract new retailers into some of our aging commercial centers. And if we're offering so much competition with the buying power that a large grocery chain may have to buy in such volume to undercut the prices of the mom-and-pop stores that are around, we're going to put those mom-and-pop stores out of business and actually bring lesser choice to the consumer, and as Councilman Mark says, ultimately bring lesser choice to the consumer. And I do know that there are some mom-and-pops that do have the facility enough to buy in volume and offer a competitive price to consumers. So I don't, don't think that we're doing wrong by consumers by asking the General Assembly to not pass this legislation. I think that the legislation, if passed, would actually be a detriment to our communities and our business community. So that's why I'm supporting the bill. Thank you again, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, supporting the resolution.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Jones?
No, I stand in support of the resolution and would like to be placed as a co-sponsor as well. I mean, there was a lot of good points that was made, and I am very concerned about the small businesses that would be affected by this. And when you look no further, while we're talking about grocery stores, a lot of people don't know the number-one seller of groceries in this country is Walmart. Walmart honors somewhere around 24% of all the groceries sold in America. The closest competitor is Kroger, which is somewhere around 12%. All the other supermarkets are below 12%. So you can look at the system that we have here in the state of Maryland that have worked well for many, many years, where we, by design, by law, only allow liquor store owners to have one license, one. And how in the world can that one licensee compete when somebody like Walmart starts selling beer and liquor? Beer, I'm sorry, beer and wine, and like a Campbell sticking his nose under a tent, it's just a matter of time before they're selling everything. And to your point, Councilman Crandall, about less choices, they will find out what is being sold the most, and those are the items that will occupy their shelves. And the niches, the things that you may be able to find at your local tavern or liquor store, those things will disappear, because if they're not big sellers, they're not going to sit on a Walmart shelf. They're just not going to sit there, because it, you know, they, they're big time and they're very serious about what goes on their shelf. If it's not moving, it's not there. So I stand ready and proud to support the legislation as well, the resolution.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I'm responding to Councilman Jones. Councilman, I think you bring up some good points, and we can also point to the hardware industry and what Lowe's and Home Depot and the amount of local hardware stores that went out of business. There's, there's a, the local hardware store in, that used to be in Essex on Back Riverneck Road, and they knew everybody in the community, and they had everything that you needed. They almost knew what you needed before you even came up to the counter, because they knew what the homes in that neighborhood required. And, you know, to my knowledge, I think there's maybe two of those left in Dundalk, because the big players are just putting those small operations out of business, even though, to your point, they're offering a more personalized service. They're often offering, as you, if I'm going to make the analogy with a local liquor store as compared to, like a Walmart, they're offering things that you need and that you want. Local craft beer is not, I think you have a great point, is not going to make it to a Walmart shelf, for the most part, I can't believe. So, it does have a ripple effect throughout the economy, not just in consumer choice. Thanks, thanks, Councilman.
Councilman Jones, you may.
Thank you. Thank you. And I guess wanted to add another issue that you brought up. You talked about competition being good. While I believe in competition, I think competition is very important and has served us well in this country. But everybody knows that very few people, and I know the small mom-and-pop liquor stores cannot compete with a behemoth like Walmart. Their purchasing power, I mean, it's just the volume that they will purchase it in, they will dry up and go out of business in no time. So, thank you. So thank you.
Councilman Young, did you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to thank Councilman Marks for sponsoring the resolution, giving us an opportunity to sign on to it. Since the beginning of the legislative session, the situation has changed, but still appreciate the bill being put in to give us a chance to go on the record. And also, from a perspective, being able to work with the Licensed Beverage Association, the folks that represent liquor stores in Baltimore County at the state level, and recognizing that every jurisdiction has its own nuances associated with liquor licenses, whether that's with a liquor store or a restaurant or packaged goods. Unfortunately, the thing that we're putting a resolution to oppose does not take into consideration the, how Baltimore County handles our liquor licenses and liquor laws, which I think have worked relatively well, in terms of keeping folks and limiting where certain folks can open up liquor stores, and kind of keeping that under a regulation that represents what we believe and also what local communities want to see. And we have, we have a handle on that. By opening up this potential piece of legislation that would open up to grocery stores without thinking about what that regulation would now look like at a county level, and opens up other questions about, does that mean every grocery store could do it? Does that mean that there would be restrictions on certain grocery stores? Would we have to bake that into the way that Baltimore County handles our regulations currently on liquor stores? And who sells beer and wine? Which only makes it harder for the smaller businesses to operate. And not to mention, a lot of the, a lot of the mom-and-pop stores that I've engaged with since there was an announcement of this piece of legislation are in a, a business location next to a grocery store, and usually the large grocery store chain owns the lease. And if all of a sudden the grocery store is now allowed to sell beer and wine, it might bring into question what their bottom line is and whether they can afford their rent or whether they would be, and this has happened in other jurisdictions too, where they allow it, and grocery stores would force them out of those leases in those jurisdictions, in those areas where there's a grocery store selling beer and wine. So appreciate the opportunity to, one, bring that to light related to how we currently handle our beer and wine sales and liquor licenses, and how this would affect it in a negative way, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Young. Any other items? Councilman Patoka, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Secretary, would you be kind enough to add me as a sponsor? My colleagues have made a compelling argument, and I'm buying that argument.
Me as well, Secretary. We'll all be on it.
Just about, yes.
Well, other than the absentee one.
Yes, sir.
I think we have some speakers, Ms. Bel Castro.
I have a feeling it will be all, but, yes.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair.
First speaker?
Certainly. Our first speaker is Jack Maloney, who is here in person.
Welcome, Mr. Maloney. Good seeing you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Based on your comments, I'm going to be pretty brief. You guys have this, this issue, you know, you must have done some research, but I do want to remind folks of two other things. There's two bills that are out there. No one's seen them, but I can tell you, I haven't fought this since Izzy Cohen and Giants started. My first fight was about 35 years ago. So the thing that I want people to realize is the bills that have been in in the last few sessions, one does the repeal, just takes away the repeal. The other one, we're hearing different things, but basically, it opens the door for multiple stores. In the past, the lobbyists have been from the farm stores, the highs, the gas station convenience stores. Probably a little-known fact, the largest growing alcohol retailer in the country is Dollar General. So it opens the door. This is not just a grocery store, and, you know, years ago, my wife had the pleasure of being the substance abuse coordinator in this county, and we have always had an interesting relationship, because she, you know, she wears white and comes in the White Horse, and I'm the bad guy from the liquor industry. But what I can tell you is that, you know, the studies have shown when you add additional outlets of alcohol, you know, bad things happen. We do sell a product that comes with some ills, and we know that. And when we come into this business, we accept these regulations, because we know it needs to be regulated. And, you know, when you start talking about multiple stores of that nature, where they have a lot of kids in the stores, you know, it just doesn't, doesn't bode well. And I think if you really look at it, I don't think that it's a problem finding beer, wine anywhere in the state of Maryland. You know, it's readily available, and I think that, that when you look at these things, people say, oh, well, other states do this and other states do that. They compare us to states where the state still sells wine and spirits. You can only buy from the state store. At least in Maryland, you can come to one store and buy all your goods in one store. You know, and I can tell you, as a local owner, we're more in tune with, with the laws and regulations, because quite honestly, if one of your employees does serve a minor, that might be the neighborhood I coach kids in. It's very embarrassing, so we take this very seriously. And again, I think, Councilman Marks, we thank you for this, and Councilman Crandall, and the comments you made about the local craft beers and what have you, I'm happy to announce that the Maryland Brewers Association, the Maryland Distilled Spirits Guild, and the Maryland Wineries all came out in support of us, because they know that they're going to be on our shelves, because we like to sell Maryland products. You know, and that decision, at my place, is made by my partner and I. We don't have to call corporate headquarters. We, if you come in and you're local, we like it, we're going to give it a whirl, we're going to put it on our shelves and do what we can to support Maryland businesses. So for all those reasons, I want to thank you on behalf of the Licensed Beverage Association for your support of the small businesses in the county.
Thank you, sir. Thanks. If Dollar General's the big liquor seller, I bet you they're selling a bunch of 99. And you find them in the gutters, I'm sure. Yeah. What he's saying, they're the biggest growing liquor. Mr. Bel, Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker. Tony's...
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Tony Singh, who is supposedly on virtually. I'm trying to find him. His name is not listed in the attendee list. Let me see if I can find him under his phone. Yes. Mr. Singh, are you there?
Hello.
You can begin your testimony.
Yes, yes, I'm here.
You can begin your testimony.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Tony Singh, and I represent Montgomery Plaza Liquors, a family-owned business that me and my parents have been running since 2019. Today, we are here to share our concern about the ban on, lifting the ban on allowing beer and wine in grocery stores. As said before, this industry is already facing major challenges, mainly because of marijuana inflation and cost of goods of every day. It's already impossible for us to survive in these circumstances. Allowing grocery stores to get beer and wine, that would be 70% of our sales. 30% of it is beer, and 40% of it is wine. So at this point, if that gets taken away from us, it will be hardly impossible for us to keep our doors open. So we respectfully urge the council to oppose any legislation that allows beer and wines in grocery stores. Thank you.
Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is George Fotis. Hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Good evening, members of the county council. My name is George Fotis. I'm the owner of Drug City Pharmacy and Liquors in Dundalk. I appreciate the opportunity to address you all today regarding the proposal to prevent grocery stores from selling beer and wine. I'm here to strongly support this proposal for several reasons that you all have already echoed, particularly its impact on protecting small businesses like mine, public safety, and the fairness of the current system. In Baltimore County, where my store is located, liquor licenses are expensive, and they're limited based on population. This system was designed to ensure fairness and prevent market saturation, allowing small, locally-owned businesses like mine to thrive. Many of us have made significant financial investments to operate under these regulations, and allowing countless grocery stores all of a sudden to begin selling beer and wine would greatly dilute our sales, undermine the value of those licenses that we worked so hard to obtain. It would also create an unfair playing field, giving large corporations an advantage that small, independent stores cannot compete with. In addition, liquor stores operate under stringent regulations with trained staff who understand the importance of responsible alcohol sales. Expanding sales to grocery stores where alcohol may be handled by less-trained personnel definitely increases the risk of sales to minors and irresponsible consumption. Furthermore, there is no supply problem under the current system. Like, like we mentioned earlier, it's not broke. It works very well, in my opinion. In most cases, a liquor store is located right next to or very near these grocery stores. Consumers already have a convenient access to beer and wine, and without the need to weaken the safeguards that we've already put into place. And the community, as you know, locally-owned liquor stores are deeply connected. We support local events, we sponsor fundraisers, we reinvest in our communities. On the other hand, large grocery chains are focused on profits that mostly flow out of state, leaving less benefit for Maryland. Allowing them to sell alcohol would shift revenue away from small businesses, eroding the local economic fabric. It goes without saying that Baltimore County's licensing system has worked well to balance supply, promote responsible alcohol sales, and support small businesses like mine. Changing this system to allow grocery stores to sell beer and wine would destabilize this balance, devalue the significant investments we've made, and hurt local economies. I urge you all to protect our current system and small businesses it supports. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Fotis.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Doc, are you still with us?
I'm here.
Hey, this is Todd Crandall. How are you?
Good. How are you, Councilman?
I'm very good. I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of things that you said. One, about local businesses being part of the community. I think that everyone in Dundalk is aware, and even outside of Dundalk, that Drug City is an institution in Dundalk. And you've made it such a fun establishment, whether you're in the market for beer, wine, or spirits, or a gift for Mother's Day, or your, or your prescription. It is, it's a very unique place, and I'm proud that Dundalk is, is your home, and I want to acknowledge your, your philanthropic efforts throughout the community as well that you never seek any accolades for. So thanks for calling in today. It was good to hear your voice, and I'll be around, and maybe you can remind us what the Drug City slogan is, in case people don't know.
If we don't have it, you don't need it.
There you go. Thanks, Doc.
Sounds good. Thank you. Hope to see you around soon.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to Resolution 5-25. This is from Councilman Marks. Do you want me to read the...
Yeah, sure.
Encourage, encouraging the Maryland General Assembly to support the passage of legislation to amend reserve fund mandates for Maryland condominium associations.
Thank you very much. This resolution requests that the Maryland General Assembly revise the reserve fund mandates for condominium associations. So you may remember, several years ago, there was a building collapse in Florida, and as a result of that collapse, there were about a dozen states that passed legislation that required more extensive reserves for condominium associations as they looked to implement repairs to their buildings. A well-intentioned effort, but one that has unfortunately led to very high fees as associations throughout Maryland rushed to comply with the requirements. Many condominiums in this state have high percentages of senior citizens. They are experiencing the brunt of these, these high fees. Many of them are in my district. The 8th District legislators and I met with a number of them late last year, and those folks have asked that we try to change that legislation at the state level. That's the, the purpose behind this resolution. We're simply asking the General Assembly to see if there's a way of maybe softening the impact of this, maybe extending the amount of time that associations have to come up with these large financial reserves. I think it's appropriate for us to weigh in. You know, we have a very high proportion of senior citizens in this county. This, it's again, a well-intentioned effort, but one that is burdening them with very, very high costs.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Jones.
Yes, I, I stand in support of the resolution as well, and would like to be added as a co-sponsor. To your point, Councilman Marks, it was a horrible situation in Florida, but what happened was, I'm not going to call it a knee-jerk reaction, but a lot of states jumped in with these requirements, and it's almost like a catastrophic one-size-fit-all, making people have their reserves to cover something extremely catastrophic that may happen, may never happen to you. They happen once in, you know, 20, 30 years across the country. So I stand in support of the resolution as well.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Anybody else? I know we have some speakers. Could we do, Ms. Bel Castro, the virtual speaker first, and then we have Mr. Rockell, and I figured we'd just keep him up here for the, his appointment as well.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker is Lillian Tomacek. Bear with me one moment. Ms. Tomacek? You can unmute yourself.
I'm not used to this, so you need to tell me where.
Are you there?
Yes.
Oh, okay. You may begin your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, council chair and council members for hearing me today, and a special thanks to Councilman Marks for supporting our communities in this effort to change what seems to be a very difficult position that our associations have been put in. My community members are in favor of Resolution 525. Our support for this resolution will help all affected to follow our reserve requirements at a five-year pace instead of a current three-year pace. This will lessen the burden on our owners, because we have to build in to our annual budgets this absorbent increase, and it especially affects seniors on our fixed income level. The expense of the reserve studies themselves have impacted our budgets, and the three-year requirement has just caused undue burden. Again, I and our community are in favor of this resolution. Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you, Ms. Tomacek. Next speaker.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Eric Rockell, who is here in person.
Hello, Mr. Rockell. Good, how are you?
Chairman Hurtel, members of the council, I'm here today in support of Resolution 5-25, but I think there's some language that should be added to it, because House Bill 107 does not solely deal with condominium associations, but also has impact for homeowners associations. I first learned of this shortly after the bill was passed by a resident of the Temonia area, Janice Pichanini. Some of you may recognize that name, because Ms. Pichanini was a former legislator herself. She lives in the Ballyroad community... She lives in the Ballyroad Community, which is a townhouse community in Mays Chapel consisting of 95 townhouses. And the way HB 107 is written, it says that if a homeowners' association has to maintain and own any, what the bill terms, components, then the homeowners' association has to do a reserve study itself. Now, in the case of the Ballyroad Townhouse Association, their common areas where there were improvements are literally the sidewalks that are outside the public right-of-way that run in front of each of the townhouses, and the parking pads that are, again, outside the right-of-way. And Ms. Pichinini's point was, you know, we've always maintained these. We, you know, if we have eight feet of sidewalk one year that needs to be replaced, we spend the money for it. The next year, if we have a series of 10 townhomes that need parking pads done, we replace that. And to do a reserve study would constitute about 5% of their annual dues, which she thought was exorbitant. Now, I would take that even one step further. She did not bring this up to me, but again, reading the law, the law says that if the homeowners' association has a component, not a building component, but a component that is within the common areas, that the cost of materials and installation is $10,000 or greater, then that's got to be part of the reserve study. I started thinking about this and said to myself, there's literally probably hundreds of homeowners' associations in the state of Maryland that have fancy subdivision identification signs, brick-based, electrified, a fancy sign. That's easily $10,000. Are you going to make all of those homeowners' associations go through a reserve study for that? I don't think that's proper. I think the legislation should be changed so if it's a homeowners' association that has a building, such as a community meeting building or a clubhouse associated with a swimming pool that's solely for the homeowners' association, I can see that, you know, the reserve study being appropriate, but not the legislation as written. So I hope this resolution will add some language regarding homeowners' association and encourage the legislature to do something about that as well. Thank you.
Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rockell. I agree with you, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Boswick. Oh, I'd like to offer that amendment. I'd also like to put in language that asks that this be transmitted to the Maryland Association of Counties. In my opinion, this is something that they should be really looking at as well.
Anybody else on this issue? Okay. Rockell, why we have you up here, you are Councilman Koch's nominee for the Council-Matic Redistricting Committee.
Yes.
And since he's not here, I will say flower, I'll say quick flowery things about you that you have been involved at the county level for many, many years. You're often in here testifying, and I know you were on the Structure Committee as well. And I know we'll be happy to have you on the committee, knowing that you've had vast experience in many areas of not only county governance, but community organization and just general, you know, dealing with county issues all around and knowing your communities well, especially in the Timonium area.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So if you, I don't know if you want to say a few words or...
Well, as you stated, I was on the Restructuring Work Group. I voted to support the expansion to nine council districts. My love of the county goes back very far. Back in the 70s, I co-authored a book with Neil Brooks, who was at that time a history professor at Essex Community College about Baltimore County history. And I've lived, with the exception of some of my time in college, all my life in Baltimore County and all my life in the Third District, which, contrary to some reports, is the most beautiful district in the county. And I'd be honored if you approved my appointment to this work group.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Rockell? Councilman Padoga.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Mr. Rockell. It was good to discuss basketball in the elevator with you.
Go Maryland!
Yes. Didn't know Mr. Rockell was a baller, so good to know. Mr. Rockell, this may be one of the most significant things we do in terms of finding districts, council districts, for a non-member council. It's an historic time in Baltimore County. Anytime you tweak maps, districts, zoning lines, there's always contention around it. And so I think what an important skill set that one needs in being involved in such a commission is to be able to work together, to compromise, to see perspectives that may not be your own, but also to add your perspectives in. And just, I know that you probably can answer this question pretty easily, but I just wonder if you're able to comment on your skill set to kind of work on such an important endeavor with eight other colleagues and looking at their perspective and how it fits with your perspective, and at the end of the day, what's best for Baltimore County. Can you comment on your ability to do that or any experience you've had on that?
Well, certainly, before this session, work session, started, the three of us that are here in person tonight, we were saying, we want to have all the meetings in person because that blends better and creates a better camaraderie and more of a human element to our understanding of one another's viewpoints on this thing. In my work for the county before I retired, I was involved in land acquisition, so I had to go into many a home and tell them that we were either going to run Perry Hall Boulevard through their farm, or do this, or that, or the other thing. And even at some points, I was told not to come back because I'd be shot if I did. So I've learned through the years to work with people, to try to calm tempers down, to try to see everyone's viewpoint, and I continue to do that in this role.
Thank you, Mr. Rockell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Padoga. Captain, Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rockell. Thank you for your extraordinary leadership over many years in Baltimore County. You helped out with an issue in Perry Hall, I remember, when you worked for Baltimore County. You have a very long and admirable background in helping people throughout this county. I think you bring up a very important point. Tone is going to be very important for anyone who serves on this committee, right? Having a very nonpartisan, even keel tone. You mentioned your remarks on the other bill, Democratic State Senator Janice Pichinini, someone you know. You know people of all backgrounds, and you've always approached your work through that very nonpartisan lens. So I want to thank you for your work and will be strongly supporting you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rockell. Appreciate you coming out tonight. We're going to move to the appointment of Councilman Young, Councilman Young's District One County Planning Board member, Brody Tennant. Mr. Tennant? How are you, Mr. Tennant? I was surprised to know that you weren't... I know you have a business here in my district, and Councilman Young's stealing you for planning board in your district. Councilman Young, did you want to say a few words? I'm sorry.
Sure, just a few things, Mr. Chair. Having not necessarily introduced Mr. Tennant, because I know he's going to make some of his own remarks, but just wanted to point out to the members, in engaging with him and trying to find an appropriate replacement for the open seat on the planning board for District One, Mr. Tennant has, one, shown his ties to the community, his activism among the business community, not only District One, but obviously across the entire county, which I think was also important from the interviews that I did have with folks, that it's more than just about one particular district. The work that gets done on the planning board, you have to think big picture. And I believe that Mr. Tennant, one, through his experience, one, being close to the area, growing up in the area, I know that we talked about you had spent some time uniquely growing up in Old Ellicott City, right across the line.
He was thorough.
That's right. And your mother owning a business also on Main Street, Ellicott City.
Yep.
But having ties to the Southwest community as well as Catonsville, and took your experiences there to college and then back again, to then put them back to work here in Baltimore County. So I appreciate your breadth of experience, your youthfulness, and your ability to see more than just a small district picture. So with that, I'll pass it to you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tennant, did you want to say a few words?
Sure. So yes, I claim Baltimore County as my life home. I grew up in Old Ellicott City, right down the street, moved to Catonsville about 10 years ago, also went to UMBC, went to Stevenson University as well, and I've been in the business, as you guys may know, in the restaurant business. I have a business right down the street called Rogan Art, so I'm invested into the community, and I plan to do more business in the community. I also am a real estate agent as well, so I have a little bit of real estate experience and look forward to future growth in the community and using my knowledge to help grow the community.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the members? Councilman Marks?
Congratulations. You are the first of the county council planning board members we get to meet and confirm. So welcome. I'm sure you do a great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations as well. Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, I think we're good for the tonight, anyway. All right, we'll see you soon.
Sounds good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so, and then now we have the appointment of Councilman Koch's Planning Board member, Mark Duval. Mr. Duval's here. How are you, sir?
I'm well, thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
And, Mr. Chairman, just as a quick FYI to you all and everyone in the audience and who may be listening, the legislative session, which would normally be next Monday for the confirmation vote for all of the nominees that you'll be considering over the next few minutes, usually would be Monday, but with the Martin Luther King holiday, our legislative session will be Tuesday, January 21st, and hopefully all of the nominees can attend. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was good to know. Mr. Duval, do you want to say a few words about yourself?
Yes, hello. Thank you. I wanted to thank the, I want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself. And although Councilman Koch isn't here, I want to thank him for asking me to represent the Third District on the planning board. I am resident of northern Baltimore County, grew up in northern Baltimore County, been there over 50 years, probably live within, well, I do live within five miles of where I grew up. I am a farmer. I grow corn and soybeans primarily. Currently on the Board of Supervisors for the Baltimore County Soil Conservation District, representing the Baltimore County Farm Bureau. I am also a member of the Piney Run Watershed Sponsor Board, Land Preservation, and the Third Gunpowder Agricultural Club. It's a group that's been in existence since the late 1800s. Prior to 2014, I was the owner of an engineering and manufacturing company. We specialized in custom controls for water wastewater applications, so I have some business experience there. I would like to serve on the planning board, to provide a voice for the farming community on items that would come before the board. If there's any questions that I can answer.
That's great. We don't often get farmers on the planning board. Any questions? Well, thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming in tonight and look forward to your appointment.
Thank you.
Okay, next is, we're going back to council redistricting commission, and Councilman Young's commission person is Rhettanda Tate Duffy. Is Ms. Tate Duffy here? I think she's on virtually.
Yes, sir. How are you all? How is the council?
Councilman Young, did you want to say a few words?
Sure, if I could. Ms. Duffy is a longtime resident of Southwest Baltimore County. She has been also the long-term serving president of the Woodlawn PTA, and I'm sure she might mention this, or maybe she won't, but her daughter, who recently graduated, was the longtime president of the student government at Woodlawn, and her son, who is now at Woodlawn, also is serving as the president of the SGA at Woodlawn. Strong ties, an amazing communicator, an advocate for the whole region in Southwest Baltimore County. I believe she's tied to, she has the ear to the ground and would be an amazing addition to this historic work group for redistricting, and would bring a sense of community and also a breadth of experience in seeing what needs to happen next in the next two years leading up to the next election. Ms. Duffy?
Thank you, Councilman Young and the Baltimore County Council. Thank you, Councilman Young, for your nomination. A little bit about myself, I'm not a long-term resident, but I have been here for eight years. I believe my experience, not only just being a resident, but also being in the Woodlawn community, as well as the scope of Baltimore County as a whole, and enjoying my time as being a resident here, I think, and my professional experience will allow me to bring an expertise to the community, to bring in their thought process, and be able to come to a fair zoning area so that we can make sure that the entire Baltimore community, county, is living up to being the best county in the state of Maryland.
Thank you, Ms. Tate Duffy. Any questions from the members? Councilman Padoga.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, Ms. Tate Duffy. I just want to say that you had me at Woodlawn. Because I'm a proud graduate of Woodlawn, and great that you're so involved in Woodlawn, and that your kids, one graduated and one is in Woodlawn, and actually active in student government. That's outstanding.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Rockell, because I think, I don't know if you heard it, but this is going to be one of the more significant things we do as a governing body. We have a mandate by the electorate to create two additional districts, and there's always, whenever you start to move lines, tweak lines, there's always going to be some folks that are comfortable with the movement of those lines and other folks that are not comfortable with it. And it can be a point of contention. And so, in many respects, this, more so than many other commissions we've appointed, will have to be one that works together in a collaborative way, one that can be compromising with the members, work well with this governing body and other governing bodies. And so I just wanted to get your thoughts on your ability to work in a, in a, in a group, in a collaborative way, willing to see the other members' perspectives, willing to respect those perspectives, and then the ability to kind of work together and come up with a joint solution to... up with a joint solution to this issue, which is to have nine council manic districts.
To answer your question, sir, yes, I do believe that I would be qualified to do that. I, I, I'm a military brat, so I think that the whole reasoning for the mandate was to bring diversity, but also, we have to have diversity and listen to everyone's experience with the county. And then also, as Councilman Young stated, have an ear to the ground to make sure that we're all coming from perspectives that are best for the county. And that only happens if we're all listening to everybody's suggestions.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tate Duffy, I think we're, are there any other questions? Councilman Jones, you have your mic on, is that, your just mics on? Okay, well, congratulations, and thank you, Ms. Tate Duffy. And we will move on to Council District Two's Council Manic Redistricting Commission appointee, Lisa Bel Castro. Councilman Patoka, you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very pleased to nominate Lisa Bel Castro as the second district nominee to the Council Redistricting Commission. Lisa is not a stranger to many of you. She's extremely talented, she's a go-getter, and she's smart. She currently is the Public Policy Director at the flagship autism group in the country, Autism Speaks. She's been Deputy Secretary under the Westmore Administration for the Department of Disabilities. She's been an elected official, is a state delegate. And she's, she's really just a good person. She's empathetic, she, I'm not going to ask her the question that I've asked the other members, because I know the answer to it. But I would, in closing, I would just say, Lisa can figure things out. So, for example, I always describe Lisa as having an Apollo 13 attitude. And what do I mean, Ms. Bell, Ms. Chris Bel Castro, by an Apollo 13 attitude? Is that, you know, you give Lisa some duct tape and a hose and a couple of boxes and to make a filter to try to get the ship back home, and Lisa can figure it out. And she's the one I would want, in a situation like that, to figure out how to get back to Earth. So with that introduction, Mr. Chair, I would send it back to you for inviting Ms. Bel Castro to speak.
Ms. Bel Castro, finally, not our Ms. Bel Castro, but Lisa Bel Castro, can you please give us some, a few words?
Well, I want to say that I'm very fond of your Ms. Bel Castro, but her name coming up a few times tonight has certainly thrown me off. I'd been ready to speak about 10 times tonight. But Chair Ortell and members of the council, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be before you tonight. It is great to be among former colleagues again. And Chair Ortell, I also want to take a moment to congratulate you on your recent chairmanship. We are thankful to have you in this position, and we look forward to the wonderful work that you'll do over the next year. For the record, my name is Lisa Bel Castro, and I am a resident of the Sudbrook Park neighborhood in Pisefield, where my family and I bought our first home 10 years ago. And I want to thank Councilman Patoka, who is also my neighbor, for putting my name forward. If confirmed, I would be honored to serve the county on the Council Manic Redistricting Commission. And in November, each of you know that county residents made the historic decision to expand the council for the first time since 1956. And that expansion requires us to redraw our current maps to make way for two more additional districts. So I commend the council for establishing this commission and ensuring that the public can participate in the redistricting process. And I want to assure you, if I'm confirmed, I'm committed to a process that is open, that engages the community, and values stakeholder input. Redistricting is a very consequential process. That's come up a few times tonight, and it impacts communities and the future of their elected leadership. And it's important that the commission be dedicated to creating districts that are contiguous and compact while ensuring minority groups have fair opportunities to elect candidates of their choice. My previous experience working on campaigns, running my own campaign, serving in the Maryland General Assembly during the 2022 redistricting process, it really has allowed me to become familiar with the entire process, become familiar with its significance, but also become familiar with its consequences. And because of this, I feel like I bring a unique and valued perspective to the commission. And I, again, just want to thank you, Councilman Patoka, for putting his faith in me. And if confirmed, I look forward to working collaboratively, correct, sorry, collaboratively with all the other commissioners, the staff that will be staffing the commission, and the community as a whole. Thank you. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions for the members? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bel Castro. Appreciate you being with us tonight. Okay, and now we'll move on to, what district we're in? District Four. Councilman Jones and Ms. Linda Dorsey Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hello, Mr. Dorsey Walker.
I nominate Ms. Linda Dorsey Walker. She has been very, very involved in initiatives throughout Baltimore County for many, many years. She is a driven, dedicated person who puts it all in the things that she take on. And she has been the leader and the founder of the Four More Initiative, which in many ways have guided us to the point where we are today. And I guess, thank is befitting that we would include her as we continue on with this commission to draw the lines. So I nominate Ms. Linda Dorsey Walker.
Great. Ms. Linda Dorsey Walker, do you want to say a few words?
Yes. Again, my name's Linda Dorsey Walker. I have been a long-term resident of Baltimore County. Over the years, I've spent the last 30 years of my life working on redistricting, off and on, starting in 1994. And I've had several successes, which some of you are aware of. In 2001, when the county looked at creating its first new fourth council manic district, there was a great deal of contention between the county council and the members of the public that were with the NAACP. And it was I who came in with a third position that reflected neither one, that the county executive at that time and the Justice Department found to be most appropriate. That became the plan that was adopted and pretty much held in place for about 20 years. In 2021, when we were going through redistricting at the state and local and federal level, there were redistricting hearings that were held, started in January of that year and ending in February, in December. In fact, the very last one was on December 23rd. At that time, I focused on trying to bring about equity and fairness in the state, in the Owings Mills area where I reside. I've lived there for a number of years. I've been living there and also serving as an elected member of the Democratic State Central Committee, representing both the 10th District and the 11th District. At that time, I put in a year's worth of my life attending every single state redistricting meeting, every one for a year, on both the gubernatorial side with Governor Hogan's staff and also on the legislative side. And at the end of the year, I put in a proposal that, thank goodness, the Justice Department was listening, and they decided that my proposal represented the best way for Baltimore County to move forward at that time. And they elected to create a standalone district known as District 11A. In between all those years, I've worked professionally as a healthcare administrator and running a number of programs for the federal, state, local level, mostly state and, and local. I've worked also internationally. But the thing that has really been my life's work is trying to bring about equity and fairness in this county so that reflects who lives here now. And I think that's important. And I can be fair, I can be open-minded, I ask, and I wish I were looking at more receptive faces, but I can be fair and open-minded and provide the necessary work, statistical work, information. I've done a lot of work with maps. I recommended, the last time I was here, a software called Map Matitude, which is the gold standard for redistricting in the United States right now, more states than any other, use that than any other software right now. It's very user-friendly, and I would suggest that it be utilized in this process. I think I have a lot of skills to bring to this because I do have the experience that I've had. I've worked in a number of community groups. I'm very well-known. And my chairmanship with Vote for More, I got to visit dozens of churches, dozens of fairs and festivals. I collected names from Democrats and Republicans, and I was able to get great consensus from about 12,000, not 10,000, 12,000 people who willingly gave their signatures and said, "We want to see change." So the change that we will have is two more, not four more, but it still lends itself to great opportunity, great opportunity to bring about a greater level of equity and fairness than existed when there were only seven. So I'm hoping, despite the fact that I know that I've come before you a number of times and there were objections to Vote for More, I'm hoping that just as Councilman Jones right now is the only minority on the, sent on this body, and therefore has a different perspective and is able to give a different voice, I'm hoping that you will understand that maybe my perspective and my voice, as a person who has probably put more of her life in this than almost anyone else, that you will allow the skills and background that I have to share, to be shared, to move us forward quickly and come up with a good resolution. For me, diversity, as I've said this before, is not just racial diversity, it's not just gender diversity, it's a diversity of ideas and concepts and people. And at least one of the other people who's been nominated, first entered into politics in Baltimore County because of my personal insistence that we overlook what other people were saying and insist that we open a door to a whole community that had not been included. And it was only one person that did that. And so I'm hoping that you will understand that I feel so much about it so strongly that I can take this as serious work. Now, I know that the rules state that a person who is elected cannot serve on this redistricting committee. I've been serving in my role on the State Central Committee for over 30 years. I am, at this time, the longest-serving elected person in the state of Maryland. If it is your feeling that because of the work I've put in, my time as a PTA officer, my time going door-to-door to thousands of homes, doing census work as well, because of the knowledge base I have and what I have to offer, if it is your decision that I have something still to contribute, that those 12,000 people felt I had to contribute, I am willing to step down from my position that I've held for more than 30 years so that I can take on this last really, really important piece of work that we've now waited 70 years to address. I'll take any other questions or comments.
Any questions from my colleagues? No? Miss, oh, good, Mr.?
Two questions, actually.
Mr. Patoka, sorry. Councilman, sorry.
Ms. Dorsey Walker, you've heard the question I've asked other members?
Yes.
About being able to understand other people's perspectives, working together, and then working collaboratively, compromising, coming up with a map that not just one person believes to be great, but that nine, seven people have agreed that this is the best way to move forward. Can you describe your ability to do that and also, in any circumstances where you work?
Sure.
In a collaborative way?
Oh, my goodness. I have headed up so many different programs and initiatives in my life. I organized a series for statewide law enforcement conferences because of disagreements that were going on. And at that time, I was able to bring about not only funding for, but officers from every single jurisdiction in the state of Maryland and six surrounding states. That was done through a group of individuals. 26 of us met for a year, each year, to bring about that initiative, meeting at the FBI Building and here in Towson at the police headquarters. I was the person who was the chair of that. I worked with some of the finest law enforcement officers that Baltimore County had to offer and the surrounding counties. Like I said, at the end, people from six surrounding states were begging to be part of the initiative that we created. That required a lot of give and take and yielding to people. I also put on four different conferences that were in the area of housing, that were statewide, fair housing conferences, again, attended by people from all over the state of Maryland. And we were able to work, all of the initiatives I've had have always had huge groups that, where we had to work together collaboratively, people from different parts of the state. At one point, I worked, I was given the assignment by Governor Schaefer. He asked for two different departments, really was three, to combine one effort into, under one of those three departments. And we had a group of 48 people that met every two weeks, and that went on for two years. So when, and we were very successful. When you ask, have I had opportunities to work with large groups and combine the forces and get the best thing moving forward? Absolutely. Because the proof is in the pudding. The proof is in the pudding. Time after time, we were successful in putting on these initiatives. Time after time, we were able to have people not only register and pay to register, but then beg for more. And so what I'm saying is, if you really believe in diversity, it can't just be lip service, it can't just be given on one side. I'm asking for you to believe in the diversity I offer, because it's great that everyone may be asking the people they nominated, can you sort of be a good player and do X, Y, and Z? But part of diversity is the diversity of thought that I talked about. And it's understanding that there's a lot at stake for a lot of different people, and they asked me, please, if you can, please be a voice, continue being a voice for And they asked me, "Please, if you can, please be a voice, continue being a voice for us", and I'm asking you that you accept the diversity that I can bring.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey Walker. One other quick question. You had indicated that you had opened the door to get someone elected. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes. And that was your nominee.
Could you elaborate on like your actions to help get her, to help her gain election?
I'd rather not go into the specifics, but we didn't have total diversity of representation of all segments on our State Central Committee. And over the years, when I came on board, I was one of three African-Americans there. At that time, I said, "Look, I'm going to try to make, over the years, I'm going to stay, and I've stayed all these years, I'm going to try to make this State Central Committee look more reflective of the county." And so we've had more African-Americans, and then after a while, we had more South Asians, Latinos. There was a need to also reflect people who were from the LGBTQ community, which not everybody was willing to do. But I fought for that and demanded it. I fought and demanded for people from the disability community. When others said, "Nope, mm-mm, that'll change how we have to operate", I fought for that, too. When we didn't have a lot of young people, we became the only jurisdiction in Maryland to have the young Dems have a permanent seat at the table on our central committee. And that was my idea, too. When the college Dems formed, I fought to have the college Dems put on. At 1.4 or 5 years ago, I asked for our folks at the state level to go to the national level and ask to give the young folks on the college Dems and young Dems a vote because they weren't voting members. And so I've always fought for all these different groups. And now we have one of the most diverse central committees in the state of Maryland because I made it my work for 30 years.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey Walker. I don't have any additional questions.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Dorsey Walker?
Yes.
I'd like to address the elephant in the room here a little bit.
Sure.
We've worked together in the sense of, you know, we've, I came onto this council, I was also a proponent of expansion. I signed your petition back in '22. In fact, I was the first councilperson. I signed it before I was a councilperson, actually. Over time, in the last year or so, we've had some combative moments here with the council. And my concern is that this is, this is something, this is uncharted territory in the sense that we, we made this expansion happen. It was, it was not without a lot of issues. And, you know, I just want to make sure that you're, I know you've been very passionate about this. You were, you did a great job on Vote For More, all the work you put in. And I just hope that on this commission, you can keep an open mind and work with people that are going to probably have different opinions than you do and maybe aren't as far down the road with this as you have been. Especially from, you know, one of, one of the big things about county council districts are, while we want diversity, we also want to keep, we want communities invested in their council district. And that's what most of us see here is that people, people, this is first-tier representation to the people. So often, people are most comfortable with their councilperson, whether they're a male or a female or, you know, race, whatever, you know, whatever it is, it's, it's, we're the person that they go to when they have, we have a plate full of problems. So I just hope that you can, you can stay objective. Like I said, we know you have the knowledge and the skill to do this. It's, you know, my concern has been that, you know, over time, we've had some, you know, combative moments, and I just don't want to see that on the committee.
I call that diversity of thought.
Diversity of thought, yes. Well, thank you. Yes, Councilman Jones.
I, I, you know, I've known Ms. Walker for quite some time, and I, too, have had some combative moments. But I've also had combative moments with people on this dais, as well as my wife and other people that I come in contact with. And I normally chuck it up to their passion for the issues that they are fighting for and representing. And at the end of the day, I respect them for their opinion, I respect them for their passion, and I move on. And as I looked at throughout my district for a representative on this committee, on this commission, I looked at people that I thought was most qualified to represent our community, who had a depth of knowledge and who are compassionate about the changes that we are seeking. So that's why I nominated Ms. Walker.
And I thank you. I'm so honored, as I said, to be nominated by you, that something that I've cherished for more than 30 years, I'm willing to walk away from because this is so important.
Ms. Dorsey Walker, any other questions? All right. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. Next is District 5. John Delena, is it?
John Delena, yes.
John Delena. John here with, John's on virtually. Councilman Marks, do you want to say?
Yeah, I do want to say some comments about Mr. Delena, but I'd like for him to introduce himself to you first.
Okay. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Marks for nominating me to this most important position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to attend a meeting tonight. Just to give you a little bit of background, I'm a graduate at Towson University, and I also have to put a plug in for Community College of Baltimore County. That's where I got my start, and then transferred to Towson with a major in secondary education, social science, and psychology. Also hold, did at the time, hold an advanced professional teaching certificate with the State Department of Education, which is a master's equivalency. Currently, I work with the Maryland Department of Emergency Management as a regional liaison officer for the central Maryland area, and that includes the Baltimore metro area, the counties of Carroll, Harford, Baltimore, Baltimore City, Howard County, Antirundale, and Annapolis City. I've been there since 2007. From 1976 to 2007, I was a teacher with the Baltimore County Public Schools, and I knew I was a special educator. Spent my entire career on the southwest side of Baltimore County, working with Catons or Western School of Technology, Woodlawn High School, Milford High School, and three of the middle schools in that area. Was intensively involved with parents and guardians of students in crafting individual education plans for the students, so I have a very good knowledge of collaboration, consensus building there. Additionally, a lot of volunteer and community experience. I was president of the Baltimore County Volunteer Fighters Association, also held other offices prior to being president with that organization, dealing with 35 member companies is not the easiest task, and was able to develop consensus collaboration. Had a lot of experience through that, working with various county agencies, namely the Budget Office presented to the county council on several occasions when I was president in reference to the budget and other issues. I've been a lifelong resident of Baltimore County for the last 65 years. Did get involved with some political campaigns, I have some knowledge of that. Also, very involved with the various community organizations over here on the Eastern and Councilmatic 7 district with that. So I don't know if anybody has any question, or Councilman Marks, you want to say anything else?
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Delena. I'm very, very proud of, to nominate Mr. Delena for this position. He really brings some outstanding qualities, I think, to this panel. First, a countywide perspective. You've heard how he was a special educator, as I am, in, in schools throughout the county, including western Baltimore County. You've heard that he was president of the Baltimore County Fire Fighters Association, a group that we've worked very closely with. And you've also heard that he's got experience in many volunteer and community capacities. I mean, I guess I just took a different perspective in what I wanted in my recommendation for this panel. I, I don't want, I didn't want someone who candidly had a partisan background. I wanted someone who had experience more working outside the party arena and who could bring that objective, that perspective to this important task. So I think he's a great candidate. I think the other commissioners will really value him, and I'm very, very proud to endorse
Great. Thank you, Councilman Marks. Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Delena, I don't know if you've been following along, but I've been asking the same question to all the candidates. This is in a historic time for Baltimore County. The voters mandated that we expand the council by two members, and now we have to figure out how that all gets arranged. It was contentious along the entire way. I'm sorry, that was spam risk calling. Been contentious the entire time, although I feel like we've, now that the vote has been over, the vote, the voters have spoken, that there's a little more clarity, with the exception of where the lines are. And so we're going to hear, we've heard from some of the other commission, some of the other nominees about their experience in terms of working together, working in a collaborative way, what their general thoughts are on compromise. Because I believe, based on my experience in other situations like this, everybody's going to have a different idea, and at the end of the day, all seven members will have to come up with a map that they can all agree upon. So I just wanted to, wanted you to share your thoughts on any experience you have or what your thoughts are in working in that scenario.
Okay. Yeah, I've dealt with contentious issues in many, many aspects, both in my professional career and in my volunteer experience. And I really believe in consensus building, not necessarily doing dictatorship where one person rules or one person's idea hits to the forefront. I like to develop consensus among people. I value everybody's opinion. I'm open-minded, willing to, to listen to other ideas or novel ideas and embrace those ideas, analyze those ideas, and give everybody a chance to speak to their ideas and not to shut somebody out.
Thank you, Mr. Delena.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Delena.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We appreciate you being here tonight. Next up is my nominee, Mr. Al Harris, who's here with us tonight for the 6th district. Mr. Harris, how are you? You're looking tired. You didn't think you'd be here for two hours, did you? I think I told him it was going to be a short meeting, and I, I lied very badly. Can I say a few flowery things about you before you start? I met Al Harris back, what, two years ago, right after I got elected, and I think we instantly liked each other. And I, Al was born and raised in, in Baltimore City. He was a former educator and business owner, also a Vietnam vet in the Marine Corps. And so I know you'll get Councilman Young's vote immediately. Was a sergeant-major in the Marines, actually. And Al also is a member of Alpha Phi Omega Fraternity, and he's a member, where I met him, he's a member of the, I always... We good? Of the Holland Hill Community Improvement Association, and also the, I guess, White Marsh Police Community Relations Council. Al was also on the Council Structure Committee with Mr. Rockel and Mr. Kramer as well. So he knows a lot about what, what the conversations were that we had when we were deciding whether to stay with 7, go with 9, go with 11, or even go with 13. And he had asked me to stay on, to kind of finish the job, and I was happy to have him. And Al, did you want to say a few words?
Well, I really don't have any too much to say, other than the simple fact that you missed a few things there along the way. After my 32 years in Baltimore City Public Schools as a special educator, I was the first real estate manager that Baltimore City ever, Baltimore Public Schools ever had. My work with mapping, real estate, being able to get along with people, the ability to just knowing that I'm not the only one with an idea. There are, everyone has their own thoughts. My thing is to be able to listen, understand where they're coming from, and be able to draw by conclusion. Getting along well with people is something I've been doing for many a year. I mean, even though not everybody agree with me. But that's, that's just the nature of the game. But I'm glad to be able to come back. I hope I'm still here when we're completely finished. Whether or not we'll be able to go from 9 to 11, if that be the case, I'm hoping I'm still here to do it.
Councilman Patoka or Marks, who wants to go first?
I'll be brief. Mr. Harris, first, I just want to thank you for your service. And I'm not going to ask you the question that I've asked all the other candidates because I saw you at work. I attended many of the Council Structure Work Group sessions.
Yes.
And you were active, you worked with everybody to come up with the solution, and there were a myriad of interests and competing themes sometimes, but you did well. So I'm not going to ask you that question. I'm just going to thank you for wanting to see this through, for continuing, beginning, being there in the beginning and then wanting to see it through. I appreciate that. Same for you, Mr. Rockel, as well, that this is a complete process. And Mr. Kramer, yes. Sorry, Mr. Kramer, I didn't mean to leave you out there. So that's, that's what I have to say. Thanks again, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you, Councilman Patoka. Councilman Marks?
You've written a lot of IEPs in your life, right?
Yes, I have. Yes, I have.
I, I think it's great we have three nominees that have a background in working with those with disabilities. Just wanted to point that out. Yeah, three. Thank you for your work.
Councilman Jones?
Yes, Mr. Harris. I, I, too, want to congratulate you and thank you for your many, many, many years of service to citizens of Baltimore County and our larger community. My mother is a, was a special education teacher for 36 years in Baltimore City. So I appreciate your dedication to that. Being a member of the Marine Corps, we thank you. And being a very involved citizen here in Baltimore- And being a very involved citizen here in Baltimore County throughout that period of time is very important. So, thank you so much for once again stepping up. Thank you.
Councilman Jones, did you, your mic's on, did you want to, okay. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ross R. Major. One, congratulations on being nominated. Look forward to voting in favor and hearing you speak too, and hearing a little bit about your background from Chairman Urteil. I do think about the three core values, honor, courage, commitment. And I know that you provided those in your previous service with the expansion workgroup. And I know that you've used them well, and you're going to continue to need them and use them in this redistricting commission. But also from your service, which far overshadows my four years in the Marine Corps, I'll tell you that. I know that you know the value in not just getting along, but also working towards something better, and also when need be, standing alone. So, I appreciate your willingness to serve and look forward to seeing the product you come up with.
Thank you.
Centrified.
Any others? All right, well, thank you, Mr. Harris. We appreciate you being here tonight.
And thank you for the nominees.
Absolutely. Have a great night. Next up is Council District 5. Did I miss, it's 7, I'm sorry, Councilman Crandall and Mr. Ed Kramer. Mr. Kramer, thank you for hanging in here with us.
Thank you, Ed. I think it was Councilman Patoka that brought up a fact about his nominee that she could fix a spaceship if we were up in space and we're in trouble with just some duct tape and a hose or something, and, yeah. And I love you, man, but I don't think you're the guy that's going to get us home in that situation.
I can go through a wall easy.
There you go, there you go. But, you know, I was not an original proponent of council expansion, and I think you all know that. And I ended up voting for the referendum to go forward after a lot of discussion and a lot of thought. And, you know, as we went through that process and as we've gone through this process just recently of selecting a new county executive, sometimes this work will throw challenges at you that you didn't expect, maybe, and challenges that you necessarily didn't want. I didn't want to go to council expansion. But, when the consensus was that this is something that we should move towards after the work done by the restructuring committee, of which Mr. Kramer was a part, you know, there were some lessons learned. One of them is that in the lack of real information or understanding, sometimes the press will just make some stuff up. And we've recently seen a little bit of that, and their present company excluded, Rona. But, you know, there's these, I think, these theories that somehow when a council member appoints someone to the commission, that council member's going to tell that person what to do, how to vote, what to say. And I can honestly say that when Mr. Kramer represented the 7th district on the restructuring committee, we never had those conversations. And I don't recall one conversation where I said, hey, this has got to go this way or vote this way, or even scuttlebutt about, hey, what are you talking about? And I wanted, you know, and to involve myself in your process, because I know that in the 30 years, 30-plus years, that you've been involved in the Hawthorne Community Association, your activity with the Essex Middle River Civic Council, you've served on various committees through the years. And I just think that you are a thoughtful, even-keeled person that hears people out. And I think you and I have had some disagreements over the past couple of years, but that doesn't get in the way of your willingness to serve your community and to serve Baltimore County. So, I appreciate you stepping up and willing to serve once again as we look at redistricting and going to nine districts. So, thank you, sir, for being here this evening, and again, for your willingness to step up once again.
Todd, I appreciate that. And you're right, it's not about individual, it's not about the council. Not one time did you ask me, because I wouldn't have listened anyway. Don't take that the wrong way, please. But, you put me on here to do a job, and that's what I'm here to do. And it's about the county, Baltimore County, and the communities to me. I live in Middle River. We have three council people in Middle River, Mr. Urteil, David Marks, and Todd Crandall are part of the, and it's been torn up. And for instance, Urteil, you have a small slither, and I want to thank you, even though you didn't have much of Middle River, you still represented it well, and I appreciate that. But, my thing is, it's, we need to make sure the communities are in one council district and things, and to me, it's real important. It makes things a little difficult to get things done, if not. I've always tried to do the right thing, and are we always going to agree? No. There's going to be times we're going to disagree. But, when we do disagree, at the end of the day, you shake hands and you walk away, friends. That's an important part. It's through the Middle River Roundtable, Kevin Cadence appointed me, and Johnny Go did too. We work with the community, the community business, and Baltimore County work together to put program together on Route 43. And I think it's doing well. My community group, I've been there for 38 years, involved with my community group. The Essex Middle River Civic Council, I've been involved there for over 25 years, 25, 20-some plus, community groups working together. And I'm going to tell you, a lot of times, there's some issues that we have to work through, but in the end, we made it through and we did the things the right way. Did we all agree sometimes? No. But, we did get it, we got it done.
I think you articulated why I nominated you for this position very well. So, I'm going to leave it at that, Mr. Chair. Thank you again, Ed.
Thank you.
Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kramer, I attended, as you heard me say to Mr. Harris, I attended many of the council expansion workgroups, and I saw you in action and appreciate your thought. I saw you work together. I think the council workgroup discussed keeping the council at seven members, growing it by two members as the voters had approved, and that recommendation came from the workgroup, expanding to 11, and even expanding to 13. So, I saw you deliberate with your colleagues on that workgroup, and so, I'm not going to ask you the question of how you work together. And I'm also not going to ask which of the three council members that represent you as your favorite, because I know that's a tricky question. But, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Harris, Mr. Rockell, for seeing this all the way through.
When you talk about council people, you know, the first time I met Julian Jones was at Kathy Bevins' last year at her birthday party, that I actually got to meet you and stuff. So, a lot of people, you know, had contentions with Kathy. I've always worked with her. Her and I, even though we're on the complete opposite of things, we always got things done, and that's what it's about right there.
So, are you saying Councilman Jones is your favorite?
You don't have to answer that. We don't want to any hurt feelings around you.
It did seem like he punted to that, didn't it?
You know, we always say, I think Councilman Marks, Crandall, and I, I don't know if they always say it, but I always say it. Who knew that Middle River was the center of the universe? But, you know that.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
No, I guess I wanted to congratulate you as well. And we, listen, we realize that we are in times when, you know, the most important thing we have is our time. So, for you to step up and donate your time to make our community better, it means an awful lot to me, as well as everybody else up here. So, I thank you so much for always being there.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Sure.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If we concluded the comments with Mr. Harris, I wanted to make a...
With Mr. Kramer?
Uh, Mr. Kramer, I wanted to make a general comment.
I think we have. Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you again, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make a comment about, as we move forward to the next stage, as we inch forward through the process, the exciting process of growing the Baltimore County Council to nine members, and we're, I think it's important to note the, how easy this process is, and at the same time, how difficult it is. It's easy because you can make it extremely easy by doing it as a mathematical exercise, where you take 850,000, divide it by 9, and you come up with certain geographical areas. Heck, you don't even need a person to do it. You could devise a computer program that says, divide these 850,000 into nine groups. But, where it becomes difficult is to make it all make sense, to have these geographic areas make sense and work together and maintain community and have some context to it. This is where it becomes challenging, and this is where competing interests and competing levels of thought come into play. And so, that is kind of the difficulty of the mission moving forward. You know, we, I've said this over and over, and I believe it, that, you know, it's a sexy word to say, data-driven. We're going to follow the data. It's data-driven. And you have to, and I think that, yes, that's fine, but if you let data take the complete lead, you leave out community sentiment. And I think community sentiment needs to be weaved into any data-driven decision, including this one. So, for those nominees that move forward in the process, I wish you all well and want you to realize, and I think you do, the seriousness of this effort, that it's going to define how Baltimore County shapes itself and reflects our richly diverse population moving into the future. So, I just wanted to share those comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Patoka. We have one more nominee tonight, and this is for the planning board, for Councilman Jones, Mr. Edward Brady.
Mr. Brady had another engagement that he could not make it tonight, but he will be here next week.
He's probably not sorry that he didn't have to wait through all this.
He could be available right now.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the lightning round, because we still have a couple bills to deal with here. So, I'm going to, Council Secretary, do you have any particular order you want me to go in, or can I use my discretion?
You can certainly use your discretion, Mr. Chair. You may want to finish up with the miscellaneous business by doing Resolution 5024, and then, and then, I think, knock it out with the bills, sir.
Okay. So, yes, we'll go to Resolution 5024, which is from Councilman Jones, supporting the Maryland Railway Safety Act by the Maryland General Assembly. Councilman Jones, do you want to expound upon that?
Yes, and I'm going, yes, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be very brief, giving the hour, so bear with me. Though, many of you know that I've been in the fire department for 32 years, and during that time, I was a member of the hazardous material team. And one of the issues that we worry most about is transportation emergencies. Because throughout our county and throughout this region, we have what we call Tier 1 facilities. These are facilities that we know that there's hazardous materials there, we know what quantities are there, we have free plans, we've practiced, we've trained, we've done everything. But, that brings us to the emergencies that we worry the most about. Those are the transportation emergencies. Because every day, methyl, ethyl, bad stuff is riding on our highways through Baltimore County and on the railways traveling through Baltimore County. And if you look at all the mishaps that have occurred throughout this nation, as well as here in Baltimore County, this Railway Safety Act is basically an attempt to make our railways a little safer for the firefighters that's going to respond, as well as the communities that we represent, when these hazardous materials and train cars are being moved throughout Baltimore County. So, I don't want to get in too much detail, but I'm just going to go over a couple of items that are here in this resolution. We're asking the General Assembly to take a look at the length of the trains, the staffing on those trains, the certification of the safety railway detector systems. That's a system that's actually on the rails that detects whether or not the train may be going too fast, or some other issues along with the train. Reporting system, the report, the amount of hazardous materials and other things that are being transported through Baltimore County. Right now, the process is, if a truck or train overturns, it has to have a placard on it, and that is how we determine what is being carried. But, sometimes those placards are obscured, sometimes those placards are burnt off, sometimes, you name it, maybe in the last rail yard, some kids didn't have anything to do but flip the plaque, I mean, the placards around or take them off. So, that's very important. So, that's the gist of this resolution. I think I covered it relatively quickly. And if you have any questions or comments for me, I'll be more than happy to answer them. And we also have a representative from the safe, I'm sorry, the smart, Mr. David Pendleton, Director of the Maryland Safety and Legislative Board, is here to answer any questions that I may not be able to answer, if you want to hear from him.
Mr. Pendleton, did you want to come up and say a few words since you've spent the whole night with us?
Yeah.
Chairman Urteil, and members of the council, thank you so much for having me this evening. Once again, my name is David Pendleton. I'm the Director of the Maryland Safety and Legislative Board for the Transportation Division of the International Association of Sheet Metal, Air Rail, and Transportation Workers, SMART. Here urging you to vote favorably for a resolution of support for the Maryland Railway Safety Act for its enrollment and enactment in the General Assembly this year. This bill is a proactive rail safety legislation. As Councilman Jones stated earlier, it addresses safe staffing onboard our trains. It has a prohibition on tying up highway rail crossings for more than five minutes, prohibition on the length of train to 8,500 feet. Most importantly, that held dearest to Councilman Jones, it's a requirement that the hazardous materials being transported throughout our state, here in Baltimore County, that it be reported to the Commissioner of Labor and Industry, so that he can have it in a database, so that in the event of a train derailment, that information can be sent to our first responders. During the derailment in East Palestine, Ohio, many firefighters responded to that fire. They didn't know what was in it, and they were breathing in vinyl chloride, they didn't have protective gear. And unfortunately, many of these firefighters have been subjected possibly to lung cancerous hazardous materials. So, it is an all-encompassing bill. Certainly wish for you to support it, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilman Crandall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Pendleton, thank you for joining us this evening. Councilman Jones, thanks for bringing this up. I think that you're probably aware that the 7th district has unfortunately seen some horrific train accidents over the past, I guess, 10 to 15 years. horrific train accidents over the past, I guess, 10 to 15 years at least. I think we probably have one of the most dangerous crossings in all of Baltimore County in Rosedale. So I'm going to join you as a co-sponsor on this, Councilman. But, Mr. Pendleton, you mentioned that this is proactive legislation, and I'm wondering if this is part of more of a national movement, because in my experience, there's state and certainly local jurisdictions, we, the laws regarding railroads go back to the 1800s, and they were sort of protected from a lot of federal oversight. And I understand that's changed over the past couple hundred years, but does the state have the, if this bill is passed, does the state have the ability to enforce what the, what the bill is proposing to enforce?
Yes, it does, Councilman.
Okay.
I can follow up with you with the Supreme Court ruling, where basically, if it is a subject that the federal government has not passed something specifically regulating, then the states are free to regulate that particular provision. And like I said, I can't follow back up with you with that specific Supreme Court ruling.
Okay, great. Thank you. I would appreciate that. We can work through Councilman Jones on that, and I'll share an anecdote with the Councilman offline that leads me to some of my conclusions about working with the railroads, but we'll do that another time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can I add one thing? You know, this is like a famous, a famous video. You can't make this up, you know, they show it to you when you first start taking the hazardous material training. This is like, this video is probably, I don't know, probably 40, 50 years old now. There's a fire chief, stuff is leaking out of a train car, and he goes up, sticks his hand in it, smells it, and touches it with his tongue. You can't, I mean, it's like, everybody just think to themselves for a minute, this is the way it used to be, before some of these regulations, with placards and things like that. Guy walks up to the train, sticks his hand in the leaking material, smells it, no breathing apparatus on, nothing, and touch, taste it. I mean, crazy stuff.
The tasting is weird, Councilman Jones.
Yeah. I mean, the smell is bad, too.
Chair. Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming before us. Thank you, Councilman Jones, for sponsoring this. I've said this a number of times before I started here, I worked in the Departments of Transportation, federal, state levels, and also point out that we just marked the 38th anniversary of the horrific train collision in Chase, Maryland. So it's clearly a horrible issue. It's a complicated issue, because you have Amtrak and CSX and all these railroad companies you have to work with. You have tunnels and bridges that were sometimes built to insufficient standards, and so I applaud your work, and I'm happy to be listed as, I'd like to be a co-sponsor of this.
Thank you, Councilman Marks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Pendleton. Appreciate you being here with us.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for your time.
It was my pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a quick, quick comment on the Resolution 325 that was withdrawn. That resolution was originally pursuant to the Cycle 42 Water and Water Supply and Sewerage Plan Amendment process. The request for a change in the designations was recommended against by the reviewing agencies, DPW, DEPS, and planning. Ultimately, the Planning Board recommended not changing anything. The resolution, as originally filed, would have also not changed anything. So when we consulted with the administration, I think we all realized that it was really not necessary to have a resolution that basically says nothing is being changed. So we came to the conclusion that it wasn't necessary and could be withdrawn. So I appreciate the administration looking at that and coming to that conclusion.
Do me last. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we're going to move on to Bill 1-25, Councilman Marks, zoning regulations, uses permitted in business maritime, marina, MM zone, marina storage shipping.
Yeah, thank you very much, and this bill's for first consideration. This is a bill that allows in the Bolles Quarters area, the marinas to have some additional storage capacity. The, I've been having a lot of discussions with the Marine Trades Association, a number of businesses in that area. The language reflects some concerns that you don't want these containers to be unsightly and pose a visual nuisance for the neighbors, but it is something that is needed by the marinas in that area. So that's the intent behind the bill.
Any questions for Councilman Marks? Okay. We'll move on to Bill 225, which is also Councilman Marks, zoning regs, farm markets with accessory carryout restaurant.
Thank you. Bill 225 allows for an accessory carryout restaurant at a farm market in Perry Hall's Honey Go area. I did run this past the Perry Hall Improvement Association, and they did not raise any objections.
Any questions for Councilman Marks? Okay. Bills for final reading and vote. We have Bill 10524, which is Councilman Patoka's zoning regs, special regulations for a cemetery in the density residential DR2 zone.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So currently, our zoning regs permits a cemetery by special exception in the DR zones. However, the zoning regs are silent as to whether a DR zone lot that was part of a cemetery with an approved special exception and was subsequently subdivided requires a special exception to remain a cemetery. This new section that'll be in resultant of this piece of legislation states that a DR2 zone lot that is adjacent to an existing cemetery that was subject to an approved special exception for an exception for any cemetery at any point prior to January 1, 2024, may be used as a cemetery by right. So why are we doing this? I can tell that members in the audience are asking. Jack Maloney, I can see, you're asking, why is he doing this?
Jack, he's very concerned about that.
The reason for this, and it goes back to a comment I made earlier about data-driven initiatives and community sentiment. So ordinarily, you'd say like, what is this? And so you won't see this in the data, but Baltimore County is one of the fastest, one of our fastest-growing demographics is the Jewish community, and we are running out of space for Jewish burials. And so this will allow for a Jewish cemetery to be next to an existing non-Jewish cemetery that's got rabbinical approval, and allow for it not to go through all of the regulation. It would be similar to the cemetery next door. And so it makes it a little bit of an easier process. So that's it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Councilman Patoka?
Just one other qualifying comment. The reason I would say that it's anecdotal rather than the, knowing what the community interests are, are more anecdotal than data-driven is because there's nowhere in the census where you identify your religion. So that's something that you would do through, through other means of understanding the community. And the reason I'm pointing it out is because something we talked about earlier in this evening.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Patoka. Any questions? Okay. Next bill, Bill 10624, this is Councilman Marks, zoning regs, uses permitted in the business local BL zone, special regulations for my favorite designation, CCC, Commercial Community Corps.
Yeah, thank you. Bill 10624 allows for accommodations of apartments and exclusively elderly housing on any story of a structure in the BLCC district. The original ten of the bill was to apply to specific area. However, I'd like to offer an amendment to make this county-wide. I've never understood why Baltimore County has this type of prohibition, and, you know, we're grappling this county with a rising senior population. 25% of our population is elderly, and it just seems to me that we should give developers the flexibility to provide for mixed housing, to have these type of units on any floor of a building. So I am going to put that amendment in.
Any questions for Councilman Marks on the bill? Seeing none, I think we're coming to an end here. Do we have any other business that I have missed, Mr. Secretary? Oh, oh, Mr. Councilman Patoka, sorry.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to the Councilman Marks' bill.
What? No, I'd like to be added to Councilman Jones's resolution as well, for the railroad safety. Why weren't on that?
And I do believe that concludes the council's business this afternoon/evening, sir.
So, Ms., do I have a motion to adjourn? I don't need one?
Oh, yeah. You got it.
Our work session is adjourned. Thank you for being here, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.